Testing, testing. Good. Testing. 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 Testing.[416.95][416.95][S01. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Thank you very much for your testimony and words, Father. Please read those messages, Mr. Decker.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on September 11, 2014, I signed the following bill which was passed by Council at its session on September 11, 2014, Bill Number 140511. And I am submitting here with for the consideration of your honorable body an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code to expand the scope of Plan 10 and DC Plan to cover additional employees including elected officials to change contribution rates and to make technical amendments. And also an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code to expand the scope of Plan 10 and DC Plan to cover additional employees including employees represented by District Council 33 and certain employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement to change contribution rates and to make technical amendments. And an ordinance authorizing an improvement in the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the financing of additional operating funds for the School District of Philadelphia for fiscal year 2015 only and the refinancing of certain bonds. And an ordinance authorizing the commission of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel of land and any improvements located at 3300 through 98 C Street for further conveyance, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and commemorating the 225th anniversary of the official organization of Delaware County, Pennsylvania to be celebrated on September 26, 2014.
That resolution will be heard on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the life and career of former professional golfer and Philadelphian John J. McDermott, Jr., who will be memorialized with a historical marker in the childhood neighborhood of King Sessing in southwest Philadelphia on October 9, 2014.
And that resolution will also be in today's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I have two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And ordinance authorizing Paul Stolfo to construct on and maintain an elevator encroachment to be located at 2536 through 38 Broad Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2015 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Director of Finance Indemnities.
And bill will also be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiernan Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing the commission of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel of land and any improvements located at 3300 C Street for further conveyance.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 4400 block of North Fifth Street between Cayuga Street and Blavish Street.
That will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commission of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled as standing on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 7th and 37th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming West Benango Street between Fifth Street and Seventh Street Joaquin Rivera Way to honor the memory of Joaquin Rivera and to recognize his life and memorialize his lasting legacy.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing today.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privilege resolution co-sponsored by members Kiernan Sanchez and Council Lady Blackwell.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Secretary of Education to thoroughly investigate any and all allegations of curriculum deficiencies reported within the School District of Philadelphia that had been properly filed and received by the Secretary.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I offer one bill on your behalf and two non-privileged resolutions, one co-sponsored by Councilwoman Marion Tascow and yourself, and one co-sponsored by Councilman Squilla, but supported by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the transfer in appropriations for fiscal year 2015 within the General Fund from the Department of Human Services prisons to the Office of Housing and Community Development, to supporting landscaping and lot cleaning jobs in the Philadelphia Reentry Employment Program for returning citizens.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and congratulating PhilAbundance, the Delaware Valley's largest hunger relief organization on the occasion of its 30th anniversary.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the committees on public safety and public health and human services to conduct joint hearings to evaluate DHS Family Service Plan policies and procedures, including the relevance of the FSP in reunification or alternative permanency planning goals for children and youth under DHS authority.
That resolution will also be on this week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance repealing an ordinance, Bill Number 140490, entitled an ordinance authorizing Cafe Italiano to construct on and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1871 Cotman Avenue.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the commission of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled as standing on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 25th, 31st, and 39th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two resolutions, one privilege co-sponsored by Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilwoman Lyndell Reynolds Brown, and one non-privileged which I'd like to speak on after the clerk reads the resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing September as National Literacy Month and acknowledging the critical work of Philadelphia reeds in strengthening the literacy skills of Philadelphia's children.
That resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar.
Thank you.
And a non-privileged resolution endorsing the People's Climate March in New York City scheduled to proceed the United Nations Climate Summit that will take place on September 23, 2014, in New York City, and supporting the thousands of Philadelphians traveling to New York to participate in the march.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Is that the resolution that you wanted to speak on?
Yes.
Or you want to do that this week?
Yes.
Can I ask you to ask for a suspension of the rules to allow that? Traditionally, those types of resolutions are...
Can I, in light of the fact that Climate Change March, the march is taking place this Sunday, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this non-privileged resolution today.
It's been moved in properly, second of all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution will be on today's final passes calendar.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Councilman O is not in today, so we have no reports from committee today, so the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. So I would ask, there are no bills on the first reading calendar today, so I now ask that Councilman Jones, for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar today.
We are moving today. Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passage calendars today. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar at today's session, we'd ask that you sign up to the table to my left. If you've already done so, your name will be called. When your name is called, we ask that you come up to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device and a microphone. When the light on that device turns green, it is your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we'd ask that you please conclude your remarks as per the guidelines. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, would you please read the name of the first witness?
Kia Hinton.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We're good.
Good morning, Council. My name is Kia Philpot Hinton. I am an Action United member, a mother of three public school children, and a community member of southwest Philadelphia. Back in May, me and other Action United members, PCATs, Working Families Party, and other coalition allies went door-to-door in our communities to get petitions signed for local control. Gary Nudgeon. Ashley Harrell. Jason Jones. These are just a few of the 40,000 who agree that Philadelphia schools should be locally controlled. These signatures resonate what the people want. Every tactic our collective groups have used in an effort to create schools that benefit all children has been knocked down and challenged in order to save an SRC that is first, undemocratically assigned, and two, has done little to nothing to improve our schools since its inception. We are in a time when the incarceration rate is growing exponentially, tearing apart our most vulnerable communities, and helping perpetuate the cycle of poverty and hopelessness. The people's voice is being silenced. Our children's future is being dimmed. These are a threat. These are a threat to justice, equality, and democracy. These signatures not only resonate what the people want, it's also what democracy looks like. So I ask you this morning to please not only vote on putting local control on the ballot, but to also support that so that the people of the community, the parents and the students, we can create what our schools should look like. We should have a voice. We should be able to do that, and that's what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Diane Payne. Commenting on 140514 and 140527.
Good morning. I'm here today as a retired teacher and, more importantly, a resident of Philadelphia. I believe every single resident of Philadelphia should care deeply about the state of our public school system because public education is the cornerstone of our democracy and a crucial factor in how our city will survive and thrive. Since the SRC was forced onto the citizens of this city over a decade ago, we have fallen only deeper into fiscal mismanagement with less accountability, more chaos due to school closings, and rampant charter school growth, which continues to suck the blood further from our struggling system. I know I am tired of a lack of democratic process. I am tired of politicians who set policy, make decisions, arrange deals without regard to public voice. I am tired of being treated like a second-class citizen. Forty thousand people signed petitions to take one small step in righting this wrong. I firmly believe it is the duty of this Assembly to honor the voices of the citizens of this city and vote today to place local control issue on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Teddy Daniels. Commenting on 140514 and 140527.
Good morning. Morning. I'm a little nervous here because it's not something I do on a daily basis. But my name is Theodore Daniels. I'm a school district employee for 18 years. I'm here today respecting nearly 40,000 people in Philadelphia who signed a petition asking for a vote, a symbolic one, because that is the only kind we can cast on abolishing the School Reform Commission and restoring local control of the schools. We were very disappointed last week when council tabled our vote on the charter amendment we've been working on for nearly six months, especially since we turned in nearly twice the amount of signatures that were required. We're here today to tell you that we still want to vote on this issue of restoring local control of the schools. If that can no longer happen in November of this year, then council should amend the ordinance and vote to put this charter amendment on the ballot in May 2015. We're tired of having schools that are dirty and crowded and inadequate to the needs of our kids. We'll keep flooding your offices with phone calls from Philadelphians and coming to your meetings and telling you, telling your constituents to email you and remind that it is not just the small group of people that you see here that wants autonomy over our schools. It is a vast, vast group of voters in our cities that are demanding a vote on local control. And I have two kids in the Philadelphia school system, and I see what goes on every day. I've been here all my life. I am Philadelphia, far as I'm concerned. And it's a shame. It's a real shame. When I went to school in the seventh grade, I had trades. When I went to high school, I had trades again. You know what that taught me? That taught me good work ethics. That taught me how to feed my family. Once I left the school district, and I have friends today, who I've been knowing for 30 to 40 years, who still feed their family from the trades they learned in the Philadelphia school system. And that was in just about every school. So I ask and I plead with y'all to change this up and give our kids a fighting chance. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Carol Green. Commenting on 120232.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I apologize to everyone for not coming up here right away. I need help. I want someone to pray for me because I can't do this by myself. And I'm just going to say a little prayer also. Forgive me if I offended anyone. God help me, in the name of Jesus. God loves everyone here. He cares about us. He's concerned about you, and he doesn't want people to be called names. And I would like it if, when people move into homes, that they won't have to listen to the loud music that they use profanity when they play their music, and the people can hear that in their homes. And sometimes they say really bad things over the air, and they call people names. And this is upsetting because God cares about everyone. And also, I would just like to say, if it's all right, talk to God every day. Talk when darkness blinds your way. Talk to God when things are bright. Talk to Him each day and night. When talking, you will find relief from all your fears and cares, and God will guide you safely through the devil's hidden snares. It doesn't matter where you are, on land, on sea, in air. Just keep on talking to your God. He'll shoulder all your cares. So just keep talking to your God, and don't forget to see the face of Him who bore our sins and died to make us free. And when the troubles of this life return to make you frown, just keep on looking to your King and at your future crown. If we don't forsake God, He won't forsake us. And I just wanted to also say, if it's all right, can I say happy birthday to my... I want to say happy birthday to my sister. God cares about her. And He wanted all of us to be born, so just don't give up. And thank you for letting me say this. I thank God for His mercy. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony and those inspiring words.
Jerry Jorkin.
Morning. Good morning. I'm Jerry Jordan, President of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. When the PFT joined Pennsylvania's Working Families and other community and labor organizations in January to collect petition signatures to put local... in January to collect petition signatures to put local control on November's ballot, we were amazed and thrilled with responses we got from residents. The PFT alone collected seventeen thousand of the twenty thousand signatures required to place the referendum before City Council. In all, over forty thousand signatures were collected, far more than what was required. City Council has been a champion for full funding for our schools and a consistent voice for more transparency and oversight of the school district's finances. Given your past advocacy for our children, last week's failure to vote to put local control on the November ballot was a shocking disappointment. The issue of local control of our public schools is clearly something Philadelphians care about. The people in this city want the power to determine what happens in their children's schools. That power was taken away in 2001 when the state foisted the School Reform Commission onto Philadelphia. Since then, our school district has experienced triple-digit budget deficits, the closures of neighborhood schools, and an unthinkable loss of programs and services for our children. This year, schools opened with conditions that can at best be called deplorable. With the loss of staff in so many schools, schools district-wide have had cutbacks in the area of maintenance and security. Most of our schools still do not have certified school librarians, and many are without full-time counselors or full-time nurses. Because of extreme overcrowding of classes, this afternoon, the entire staff of Central High School will be protesting before the parents come back to school night because since the very first day of school, many of their classes, Spanish one, algebra one, for example, have fifty children in them, no, not enough seats. And those are the children that we are expected to teach and we want them to succeed. Those are not conditions that are good for learning. I want to share with you also, things are so bad, in one elementary school, there are split classes, well, there are split classes in several, but in this one, at Overbrook Elementary, they have a split first, second, and third. One teacher teaching a class of first, second, and third graders. All of this, all of this has taken place under the watchful eye of the SRC. I urge every member of council to vote on this referendum, to put it on the ballot, and because of the timeline, I urge the mayor to sign the bill today because it has to It needs to be signed today so it can be placed on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Catherine Blunt. Commenting on 140527.
Hey, that's right. Okay. First of all, good morning, and good morning, fellow citizens and voters. I have returned. I was here last Thursday. I didn't have this reception, so I'm glad that I am here with you because I did sign that petition. I was one of the forty thousand. So when I was here last week, I spoke about twenty thousand. Let me say this, I am retired teacher, retired principal. I was a union rep for twenty-seven years. I was with the school district for forty-three years. So I know what I'm talking about when I say it is time for the SRC to go. Our children are our most precious assets. We have to protect them and we have to educate them, all right? So that it is important, City Council members, for each of you to understand the unique role that you play here today and the expectation as voters we have of you. We need you to support Resolution 140527 and 140514. We need to have the opportunity to voice our opinion about the SRC. That's not your job, it's our job. We need the opportunity to take over our schools, to determine what the curriculum should be, because they don't have a curriculum now. They don't have enough textbooks now. We need the right to be able to say, these are the people who will represent us in our interest for our children. So I encourage you, each and every one of you today, to please vote in the affirmative for the two bills to put this resolution on the ballot. We didn't get it for November, unfortunately, but we need it for May. Thank you.
All right, we got your message, we got your message. Let the last, we have one more person to testify, and then we will conclude with our business. Thank you.
Commenting on 140527.
Hi. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm here representing as a parent who has four children, who had four children in the public school system. Two have graduated and moved on, and now I have my twin boys, who are very active in the community as well as myself. And as I speak, I would like for a lot of you guys to look at me, because this is about me. I know the cellphone is popular, but right now, I got the floor because I want, because a lot of you guys, I know, and when y'all come to our community meetings, y'all have my full attention. So I would like that respect back. I would like that respect back, okay? Now, I went to my twins' home and school, my twins' back-to-school night, or my night that I had to go to school, I'm in school. And when I had to hear the principal speak on at Samuel Fells that there's a possibility that they are targeting my boys' schools to turn over the charter, I know I was signing up for home and school. I just didn't start today visiting my children's school. I have a thirty-year-old, a twenty-four-year-old, my twins are sixteen. I didn't start two weeks ago. I started when my thirty-year-old was in school. And two of the schools that my children went to are closed, Germantown and William Penn. I'm not going to stand here and allow another one of my children's school. I could have been had my twins in a charter school. They qualify. But I still have them in a public school where we're told that public school education is the best education. So I want full control. I want full control. I'm on a lot of committees in the community. I just don't stay in my Logan community. And I'm wearing the hat of a parent who cares. And when we go to the schools and the kids can't wash their hands because there's no hand sanitizer in the bathroom, and then when they are called out and the parent had to call out sick, then here come the truancy officers because the little babies didn't have hand sanitizer in the bathroom to wash their hands with some soap. Now come on, who wants to go to the bathroom and can't wash their hands with soap? Come on, we need full control. I'm a parent, if you put me in control, things will happen. You just don't see me standing here. You just don't just see me standing here. And you will see me in South Philly, West Philly, Northwest. You will see me everywhere. So I'm standing here with this petition in my hand to say, we need to get that on the ballot for now. This year, no more will we stand for the foolishness, the SRC, what's going on. Full control back to the parents, the community, strong community, built-on community. A lot of you guys, a lot of times, I don't, we don't see you until it's time to vote, but that's another story. But full control, full control from the parents and the community, ones that build and know what to do concerning our children. Back in control, that's it. Peace out.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move forward with the consideration of the count. Folks, actually, a little quiet, please. Thank you. We will move forward with the consideration of the calendar at this time. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of 140527?
A Resolution Submitting to the Electors of the City, An Amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter, and Titled Referenda Approved by the Voters. By Adding a New Section Providing That the Citizens of Philadelphia Call Upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the Governor to Abolish the School Reform Commission and Return Local Control of Philadelphia Schools As Proposed by a Petition Filed with the Council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Certainly, we call for the adoption of this resolution, but we would like to make remarks.
Please do.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Kenny. We want to speak on this resolution due to concern, I'm very sorry that we disappointed people last week, but we were asked to hold up the resolution so that we wouldn't send any mixed messages to the governor from council about the $2 cigarette tax that certainly has now been passed by the House. Since that has been moving ahead, and newspaper reports that we heard say that the governor will sign it once the Senate votes, then we feel that there can be no mixed message about council's concern and their request for that $2 tax or our concern about this resolution. Let me assure council members, one asked me about funding, we have not talked about it in this resolution, nor are we talking about changing council's role in funding, so none of us need to be concerned about that. We are, however, should you support this resolution, we do, however, request that the mayor sign it because we are up against a time deadline so that it may go on the November election. I thank all of you, the majority of whom have agreed to support this. We thank you all, and certainly know, all of us realize, schools are in big trouble. We've got to do something different. If we want different results, then we can't do the same things we've done. So we're trying to do our part to have a different outcomes so that our schools may be in order and that our youngsters may receive a good education. Thank you all.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to take an unpopular position here. I will not be supporting this resolution and the subsequent bill.
Folks, 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 hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. Folks, I ask that you please show some respect for the members as they take their position in a very public way. All right, we've given, hold it, hold it, we've given everybody an opportunity to speak what your position was, and we sat and listened to your position. Council members deserve to respect and give their position. And then we'll have a vote, and then we'll move on from there. Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. My vote's not about the subject itself. I certainly understand the desire for a change in how public schools are governed. I understand why a petition was circulated. I understand why Councilwoman Blackwell has submitted this resolution and bill. However, I believe we made a mistake years ago, and I have stated this position before this particular matter arose, when we started placing non-binding referenda on the city charter, sometimes on issues that did not even pertain directly to city matters. While school governance is certainly a city-related issue, the fact is, nothing changes if this question is supported by the voters. The SRC remains in place. Nothing changes. In short, I don't believe the city charter should be an opinion poll. I believe it should be about the rules and regulations of the city. I think there's things that we can do, we have done in the past. Many of us have stood up many times and supported funding for the public schools, oftentimes being criticized by other constituents, but we did what we had to do. But I think this is a position that I want to be consistent on. I've taken on other things in that ballot questions have come up, and again, I'm going to try to be consistent here. So I'll be voting no on this resolution and bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. The question that's going to go on the ballot, when I believe this will be affirmatively approved, is, shall the School Reform Commission be abolished and local control returned to the city? The answer is yes. I know very few people who are against this and say no. In fact, we do know that about forty thousand people signed a petition to say yes. I was one of them. One evening, one evening I was home, my doorbell rang, and I answered the door, and someone told me about a petition, the ballot question. I was fully aware of the ballot question, but I let the person talk, because they took the time to go door-to-door, they took the time to come to my door, they took the time, not knowing who I was, to explain to me that ballot question. Why? Because they care about the education of our children, and they realize we're on the wrong track. The truth of the matter is, we often complain about parents and communities not being involved in the education of our children. To do that and then not allow people and respect their opinion is hypocritical. At the end of the day, this is not any old ballot question or opinion poll regarding the charter. At the end of the day, local control is already in the charter. We're simply asking to revert back to the charter. So once you abolish the SRC, we will automatically return to local control, which is in the charter. So this is a question about the charter, and so it is actually in proper order. So I'll be voting yes today, and I'll be voting yes in November. Thank you.
Councilwoman, you have made your motion. We will now, because it is a charter amendment, as tradition, do a roll call. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenly. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Kenny. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neill. Councilwoman Kennedy Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasco. Council President Clark.
Aye. Folks, we have, all right, all right, you're welcome. We still have some, still have some additional, some additional votes, actually, one pertaining to this matter. to this matter. Thank you. The ayes are... All right, all right, hold on for a minute. Hold on. Hold on a minute, please. Ayes are 16, and ayes are 1. The motion passes. So Resolution 140527 is approved. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of 140660?
A resolution urging the United States Department of Defense to include the names of the 74, 74 fallen sailors of the destroyer USS Frank E. Evans on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial.
Thank you. Let me make a slight correction. It was fif- the vote was 15 to 1. Councilman O is not present today. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien for a motion. On 140660.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140660 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140662.
A resolution supporting President Obama and the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Power Plan that will help reduce carbon pollution from existing power plants throughout the United States.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I move for the adoption.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140662 is adopted. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 130950A?
An ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code to provide for the authorization of certain pedestrian enhancements to occupy by license a portion of the right of way.
Thank you. This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell.
Hold, hold. Councilman, hold. Mr. Decker, hold on one. Folks, I ask that, as you exit, will you please keep your voices down? Thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Decker.
Councilman Good. Councilman Greenly. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Kenny. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neal. Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasco. Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140377A.
An ordinance amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code by adding a new chapter, 102100, entitled Marijuana Possession, to create a civil penalty for the possession of certain items, and to provide for penalties and enforcement procedures for violations of such provisions.
Thank you. Thank you. This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenly. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Kenny. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neal. Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasco. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 14, and ayes are 2. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 130530.
An ordinance amending Chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Tax by providing certain exclusions, revising certain tax rates, and creating certain fresh food tax credits, and amending Chapter 191200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parking Tax by providing for scheduled reductions in the rate of the tax.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez.
President, I move that Bill 130530 be placed on the suspension calendar.
It has been moved in property second. That Bill number 130530 be placed on the suspension calendar. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 130530 is placed on the suspension calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140514.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home World Charter, entitled "Referenda Approved by the Voters," by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the governor to abolish the School Reform Commission and return local control of Philadelphia schools as proposed by a petition presented to the council.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenly. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Kenny. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasco. Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 15, and ayes are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and commemorating the 225th anniversary of the official organization of Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to be celebrated on September 26, 2014, introduced by Councilman Kenny.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the life and career of former professional golfer and Philadelphian John J. McDermott Jr., who will be memorialized with a historical marker in his childhood neighborhood of Consex- King Sessing in southwest Philadelphia on October 9, 2014, introduced by Councilman Kenny.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Kenny.
I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing October as Philly Plays Scrabble Month, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Maria Walsh, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing, and congratulating Philabundance, the Delaware Valley's largest hunger-relief organization on the occasion of its 30th anniversary, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committees on Public Safety and Public Health and Human Services to conduct joint hearings to evaluate DHS Family Services Plan, Policies and Procedures, including the relevance of the FSP in reunification or alternative permanency planning goals for children and youth under DHS authority, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, Mr. President, I move for adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, a resolution recognizing September as National Literacy Month and acknowledging the critical work of Philadelphia Reads in strengthening the literacy skills of Philadelphia, Philadelphia's children, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution endorsing the People's Climate March in New York City, scheduled to precede the United Nations Climate Summit that will take place on September 23, 2014, in New York City, and supporting the thousands of Philadelphians traveling to New York to participate in the march, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Any speeches on the part of the majority? And Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've all read and seen in the media in the last week, two Philadelphia citizens simply enjoying the streets of our city on a way to get a pizza were descended upon by as many as 15 people, and one of the gentleman's jaws now wired shut for at least two months. They were beaten to a pulp. The police on the scene thought that someone had been shot. There was so much blood at the crime scene. They were beaten primarily because of who they are, who they were born to be, and the fact that they decide that they want to live their lives in freedom and dignity. Further understood that, you know, this group of young folks, these 20-somethings, are not Philadelphia residents, but came into our city from the suburbs and ended up pounding two of our citizens in a severe way. I sent a letter today to Zane Meminger at the U.S. Attorney's Office, simply because Pennsylvania does not have a provision in its hate crime code dealing with sexual orientation, and that says a lot about Pennsylvania, but it doesn't mean that people in our city should not be protected under federal law from assault and mayhem based on their sexual orientation and their display of their, their affection and emotion for others. If you are a homophobe or a racist, and you're from the suburbs or from outside the city, we really don't want you to come here. We don't want you to use our restaurants. We don't want you to walk our streets. We don't want you to enjoy our city life. We can live without you. I'm sure that this will all work its way out relative to social media and the surveillance cameras and everyone's cooperation. The one, one thing that was very, very heartening about this whole situation was how social media responded, and people retweeted and tweeted and posted on Facebook, and, and these miscreants were tracked down as a result of that cooperation. So it shows that as Philadelphians, we do care about each other. But I, I want to reiterate, we don't want your kind here in, in Philadelphia. If you have hate, hate in your heart, if you have violence in your fist or your feet, we want you to stay home and, and deal with your own community in a reckless way. We hope that these two young men, citizens of our city, will recover and not have many psychological result, issues resulting of it. And we hope that people who are LGBT or any way different than, than, than anyone else, who thinks about wanting to come and live in the city, this city was raided by the Human Rights HRC as the number one gay-friendly city in, in the country, including San Francisco, and we're proud of that. And we want you to come here and live. We, we, we welcome you, and we will do our best to protect you. But this incident, again, with much violence in, in cities and in, and in, in America today, this stands out as, is really a totally unnecessary situation, and we, we, we will fight to make sure it doesn't happen again. And I've asked the U.S. Attorney's Office to bring, if possible, if necessary, the force of the Federal Hate Crime Act to bear in this if, if, if necessary. So I'm, just want to apologize to the, the two men who were beaten and, and hope that this kind of thing won't happen again, and it's just a very sad situation. And hopefully Seth Williams and Zane Meminger and, and law enforcement will adj- address this in the most appropriate way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well said, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, you celebrated your birthday, and it was a...
35.
You went to public school, but we count it a little differently, but, but, but we...
Councilman, it's called political math.
You might have been rounding down, I guess. But, but the point is, today, you gave a lot of returning citizens a potential present that'll last a lifetime. You submitted a bill to move about $1 million from, to the prison budget to support reentry and, in fact, get young people that are trying to come back as citizens a job cleaning lots in our city that is so very needed. We've done a, and I wanted to, I wanted to commend you for that, and, and say that we've done a lot of things in this body, like ban the box and trying to level the playing field if we could to get citizens to be the responsible individuals we hope them to be, but this is tangible help for real people, and I know you can't give a speech at the majority, so for your birthday, I wanted to say that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do want to echo those comments from both of my colleagues, Councilman Jones and also Councilman Kenny. I strongly follow their sentiments and agree. But one of the things that I wanted to touch on today is that September is recognized as National Literacy Month. And so last week, we talked about Library Card Sign-Up Week. Last week was, sign up for your library card. And this week, we wanted to highlight the work that Philadelphia Reads does for all of our city's children to help make sure that they can read above their reading level. Facing shortages in our classroom, Philadelphia Reads makes filling the shelves with books a little bit easier for educators and for parents. And also, I want to mention that outside of my office, we are going to be having a box. If you have any old children's books, old, gently used, or new children's books that you would like to donate, we will have a box outside of my office that you can donate those books there. As part of National Literacy Month and the ongoing commitment to helping children become lifelong readers, I'm happy to join Philadelphia Reads in their Reading is Love initiative, which encourages parents and caregivers to read aloud to their children in an effort to better prepare them to excel in an academic environment. We know that children who haven't been exposed to reading prior to kindergarten are already behind by the time they start school. I'd like to encourage my colleagues to show your love through reading. Join me in the Reading is Love effort by posting a selfie of yourself, reading your favorite book to a child, a grandchild, or maybe even a child in your community. Take the time to show that reading is love, and I'm going to be posting my picture with my daughter, Karsten, today on my Twitter page, so I hope to see yours as well. Also, really briefly, I just wanted to mention that next week, we're going to be introducing a resolution recognizing that it's National Gear Up Week, and we're going to have a great series of events here in Philadelphia, starting with Monday, September 22, down at the atrium in the school district building, 440 North Broad. We're going to have a dynamic group of speakers, including Congressman Fatah and Ricardo Calderon, the epic stakeholder coordinator for ASPIRA, who's going to be recognizing National Gear Up Week and all the work that Gear Up has done to send so many children on a national level to higher education. So it's very important to note that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank all my colleagues again for the vote with regard to education, and so certainly agree with all that has been said today in their remarks. But now I rise to talk about International Peace Day, and we will be celebrating it at the Penn Museum on the 21st. As you know, the Penn Museum at 33rd and South Streets, Spruce and South, has the largest collection of artifacts anywhere in the country. On, on the 21st, we, Sonia Sanchez, poet laureate, emeritus of Philadelphia, and an international peace activist, will host this event, and we will be with her as she hosts it and as she performs. We will also be featuring many students, and we will have renowned performers, including TC Carson, actor of Living Single and Fame, Black Ice poet, Danny Simmons, artist and philanthropist, Lady Alma, vocalist, and many others. We also will be dedicating a peace bench and establishing peace sites throughout Philadelphia, and will give out Peace Warrior citations honoring people like Charlie Mack Foundation and Palm Solutions, as well as the African Diaspora Local and Global Initiatives. We will also honor Sonia Sanchez, our co-host, as she celebrates her 80th birthday. So, Mr. President, you, you may not be 35, but you're not 80 either. But, so certainly, we invite everyone to join us on Sunday at the Penn Museum of Archaeology and Anthropology. We will be, be there to co-host this event, and all of you know how Sister Sonia has been dealing with the idea of peace, and, and this is an important day for her to talk about her views and for us to have a chance to enjoy her. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And with that, I'd like to call on Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 25, 2014, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 25, 2014, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it? Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.[1767.28]